We'll call the order of the Board of Commissioners meeting for Tuesday, May 20th, 2025, for Douglas County, Nebraska. Please note that a copy of the Open Meetings Act is located in the North Wall of the Legislative Chamber alongside an automatic external defibrillator. Please stand for the pledge.
We will start with our Board of Equalization meeting. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Borgeson, Commissioner Kavanaugh, Commissioner Fahy, Commissioner Friend, Commissioner Morgan, Commissioner Rogers, Mr. Chair.
Here. First on our business are items A and B, A being the approval of the minutes of the Board of Equalization meeting held Tuesday, May 13th, 2025, and B being a call for a meeting set Tuesday, June 3rd, 2025, as date for hearing on certified assessment corrections reflecting the addition of omitted property to the tax rules or increased value on property. Do I have a motion and second?
Second.
Motion to approve A and B by Rogers, second by Morgan. Please vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you. We have two protest items that we'll take individually, the first one being item C, a protest of rejection of homestead exemption for Angelina Saldana at 6820 North 92nd Avenue in Omaha, Nebraska, 68122. And Mr. Goodwilly, kick us off.
Good morning, Commissioners. Mike Goodwilly, Douglas County Assessor, Register of Deeds Office. For protest C, for Ms. Saldana, we have done some further review and research into this and have decided, or I have instructed our staff, to rescind our proposed denial of this homestead application, and so we would advocate that you go ahead and grant the protest and the homestead exemption today.
Motion by Borgeson, second by Morgan. Any questions or discussion? If not, we can vote to approve.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Item D?
Yes, this is the protest of a homestead exemption application for Yvonne White at 3025 Seward. This one deals with perhaps the most basic requirement of all for homestead exemption, that the property be owned and occupied by the applicant and be their primary residence between January 1 and August 15 of each year. In this instance, Ms. White sent us her application this year, and we noticed something unusual that is less than, well, it's so miniscule, it certainly got our attention. It had a postmark from someplace called Green Valley, Arizona. Okay? And we got the application on April 2nd. So because that's unusual, it kind of raised a question, well, does this person actually reside in the home for which she's applying? And we discovered that she also is a co-owner of a home in Arizona, and on there, they have a form they call an affidavit of property value, which I suspect is a little bit like our Form 521. And on that form that she signed, it indicates that that property was to be used as her primary residence. Digging in a little bit further, it sounds like the Nebraska Department of Revenue has been reviewing this issue as well, and they had contact with her in November of '24 about her residence, and at that time, she was in Arizona. There was another conversation in January of '25, and she still indicated that she was still in Arizona. So in terms of a timeline, you've got late '24, you've got January of '25, you have April of '25, where it doesn't appear that Ms. White was living in the home on Seward Street. Again, the requirement is that someone occupy the home between January 1 and August 15, and that be their primary residence. And at least based on the evidence we had, we don't think that's the case here.
Thank you. And is Ms. Yvonne White here either in person or through Zoom by chance?
Through Zoom.
Okay. Go ahead.
Yes, my name's Yvonne White, and I do live at 3025 Seward Street, Omaha, Nebraska. I've been going through a divorce, which I had written to the person in Douglas County, letting them know I'm going through a personal matter. I didn't want to go into details, but my spouse was prohibiting me from leaving the state to finish this divorce out. We've concluded our divorce on the 5th of May of 2025, and I'm on my way back there now. I should be in Omaha no later than the 1st of June. I do have my furniture, my clothes, everything's in my home. I still live there. I've been just trying to save my marriage by being in Arizona at this time. Unfortunately, we're divorced, so I'm on my way back there as soon as possible.
Thank you, Ms. White, for that additional information. I'm going to go ahead and open up for discussion here, starting with Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Thank you. Mr. Goodwilly, if I understand this correctly, in order to have this exemption, you must have a primary residence here?
Yes.
Okay. And this happens in like voter registration and stuff, where you have to have voter registration in one place, you can't have voter registration in two places. So you declare a primary residence.
Sure.
And you're saying that the form that declares Ms. White's primary residence in Nebraska was filled out when?
Well, we don't have, the homestead application form?
Yeah.
That was filled out sometime in late March or early April, but it had a postmark from Arizona.
Of this year?
Of this year.
Okay. And then the one in Arizona was filled out when?
Back in 2020, when it was purchased, they indicated it was their primary residence.
Okay, so the most recent election of primary residence is the Nebraska primary residence, right?
Well, I guess.
No, just chronologically, if there are two dates on two documents?
Sure.
Most recent one is the Douglas County, Nebraska one?
Yes.
Okay. Ms. White, can you hear me?
Yes, yes.
I'm sorry for your trouble. We're trying to sort out kind of a confusing situation here. You can only have one primary residence for purposes of this exemption, as I understand it.
Yes.
Correct. And what I did was...
Let me just ask you a couple of quick questions, okay?
Sir, yes.
Your residence here in Omaha, 3025 Seward Street, you claim that is your primary residence?
Yes.
Okay. Your residence there in Arizona, do you own that residence?
Yes, I own this residence, but we use it as a vacation home, but my spouse wanted to live here, and I did not.
Okay. So a lot of times in divorce settlements, there's a property settlement, and somebody ends up with this and somebody ends up with that. Do you still retain ownership in your Omaha residence, in your divorce settlement?
Yes, I retain sole ownership of my Omaha residence.
Okay. And it's your intent to come back here and live in June, is that correct?
Yes, it, I'm going to be driving.
That's fine, that's fine. I just want to determine that that's your intent.
Yes, yes, that's my intent.
Subject to the divorce decree, what's your ownership in the Arizona property?
That is still in the court, and the judge has given me permission to stay here because financially, I can't keep going back and forth.
Okay, okay, but you still have ownership rights in that property, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. But you consider the Omaha property your primary residence going forward?
Yes, yes, it is.
Mr. Goodwilly, you know, like these election things, they say where you say your residence is and where you intend to go back and live is your residence.
Well, the problem is, it doesn't sound like she has actually lived there during this January 1 through later this summer window. She's been in Arizona the whole time.
Oh, I know lots of people who do that.
Well, lots, those people wouldn't qualify for homestead either.
Why not?
Has to be your primary residence, and you have to live there.
No, no, their primary residence is Omaha, but they have a summer place someplace. I'll come back to it.
Thank you. We are going to go to Commissioner Borgeson.
Mr. Chair, and that's actually what I was going to ask, just because I know people too, that take off during the winter months, which include that January through March time, where they live here, but they have a place in Florida or wherever, Arizona.
Let's just say, based on the timeline we have and the information we have, we think this is more than just a summer or a winter home.
Okay, but she, the homeowner, is stating that this is her primary residence and will be, not only because of her stating that, but because of the divorce that she now...
It doesn't appear that it has recently, but okay, sure.
That what?
It doesn't appear that it has recently, but okay, sure.
Okay. But again, my guess, what I'm trying to get at is that point where it was her primary residence, she went to Arizona to, again, personal stuff, tried to save her marriage, it didn't work, and now she's coming back. And so with that, I think again, because that was her primary residence, and she left for a personal reason, I think she should be granted the homestead exemption, so I make that motion.
All right. We have a motion to approve the homestead by Commissioner Borgeson. Is there a second? A second by Commissioner Rogers. Further discussion on the matter, Commissioner Kavanaugh has the light.
Thank you. So we're just trying to do the right thing here, but I think we all know people who go to Arizona for the winter, or, you know, they go to Canada for the summer, whatever, they have a cabin down at whatever lake. And yet, their Omaha residence is what they consider to be a primary residence. And I'd just like to get your clear understanding of why, in this case, this person who it appears has a winter place in Arizona, like a lot of people, wouldn't be able to maintain their primary residence.
We think it's more than that. As far back as 2020, she was saying her Arizona place was her primary residence. We know she was corresponding with revenue back in the fall of last year and early this year, and the application came from Arizona as well, which says to us, this is more than a short-term winter stay. So we may just have to agree to disagree with the facts are telling us.
Okay, but, you know, it appears that this couple are in the course of a divorce, where property settlements are common, as a matter of fact, you know, they're required. So would it be possible, maybe for clarification purposes, to delay this until it becomes clear what the courts do with that Arizona property? If she's not awarded the Arizona property or a property right in the Arizona property, she couldn't possibly claim it as a primary residence anymore.
Sure. Well, I don't know. There is a window where we have to get the recommendations for homestead to revenue by the end of August, and I have no idea what the court's schedule is in Ms. White's situation.
I see, but what I'm saying is, could we perhaps lay this over for a week or so, just to try to clarify that?
It's up to you, it's on your agenda.
No, but it would be your, I guess, it would fall into your purview to clarify that position, if possible. It might not be possible to clarify it.
I don't know that it's going to change the fact pattern.
I see. I don't know. I mean, I think Commissioner Morgan might have some expertise in this area, but is there something that I'm missing here? Because it seems to me that this happens all the time.
I'm just not sure. I plan to abstain from voting on this because...
I hear what you're saying. I guess, you know, I would think you should be able to go back and forth if you have a residence in Florida or Arizona, wherever it might be, it would seem like that's the case. But I thought I heard you say, Mr. Goodwilly, that it showed something that I'm a resident of Arizona.
Back when they purchased the property in 2020, yes. The form asks if it's a primary residence, and both Ms. White and her spouse, or then spouse, signed it.
Did you check to see if their cars, do they have a car registered here in Omaha?
No.
My car is registered in Omaha, Nebraska, and has been.
Are you registered to vote in Omaha, Nebraska, ma'am?
Yes, I am.
Are you registered to vote in Arizona?
No, I'm not. I can't vote in two places. I always vote in Omaha where I'm a resident.
Okay, and I hear you say you do have a car registered in Omaha?
Yes.
Yes, I do.
And do you have a car registered in Arizona?
No, I don't.
You know, these are the kind of indicia...
Commissioner Governor, we actually had jumped into PJ's lot of time when we transitioned there. No, you're good. Good contextual information. Commissioner Morgan, were you done?
Done.
Okay. I had Commissioner Friend in the queue as well. Mr. Friend?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Goodwilly, that, it's good information. Could you expand a little bit on what the statute, it's not just, I don't know if I have a good question here, but you'll be the judge of that. It's not just a matter of getting a postmark card. There are statutory, there are statutory guidelines and statutory rules associated with homestead exemption.
Sure.
Now, can you dig, maybe as briefly as you can, or give me a summary of, it's not just the postmark that sent a red flag up. What you're saying is, there's two residences and, and there's some, at least violation of the spirit of the law.
Well...
So could you weigh in on that? Because I'm having difficulty, how many people that we don't get postmarks from are in Arizona or Florida for three months out of the year, and they're still getting homestead exemptions, yet Yvonne sent the document in, we saw it was from Arizona, and we go, oh, there's a red flag?
Sure.
Which is fair, but at the same time, how many are falling through the cracks for violating state law?
Well, that's a fair question. I would say that Ms. White is in one of the veterans categories that makes income irrelevant, okay? There are veterans categories where the value of your home and your income don't matter. If you're in that category, you get full exemption regardless. For the bulk of our applicants who are over 65, there are means tests, including an income limit. In our experience, the folks that qualify under the means test are not folks who are spending three months in another place with a second home. So I guess the short answer is, there could be, but given the realities of most of the people that are applying for homestead, probably not as many as you might think.
Okay, well, Mike, are those means tests are assessors-based means tests?
No, no.
Not necessarily based on state law?
No, they're state law.
Okay.
They give us a chart every year, and they'll say for over 65s who are married, you know, here's the most income you can have to be 100% exempt, and here's your income to be 90%, 80%, 70%, so forth. And there's another chart for those in the disabled categories. And the state comes out, they adjust that for inflation every year, and we get a new chart every year.
Okay. Final question, because there's a motion and a second to actually grant the exemption.
Sure.
What I would ask you is, if we took, if we delayed this, if we pushed this back, and we gave you an opportunity to work with Ms. White to gather more data or gather more proof, is that worthwhile at this point?
Look, I think if you folks want to grant the exemption, grant the exemption.
Okay. All right. Well, Mike, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Morgan?
Ms. White, are you in Omaha now, right now?
No, sir, I was waiting for my final paperwork for the divorce, so I could show you guys proof of why I was here, but I'm just going to wait until I get paid and come home.
Okay.
That's why I'm on FaceTime, because I couldn't be there in person.
Very good. Thank you. Appreciate you at least being on the Zoom call.
Mr. Kavanaugh?
Did I hear you correctly, Mr. Goodwilly, that there's also a veterans exemption issue in this case?
No. Oh, no, no, this is all about residence.
Okay. My understanding is, if I was away for any reason, and we've got kids away at university, and they're still registered to vote in Omaha, Nebraska, they spend a lot of time every year at a university someplace, they're still eligible to vote here, even if I were registered to vote someplace else, and I moved to Omaha, Nebraska, and I registered to vote here, I don't cancel my registration to vote wherever I was, I just don't vote there anymore. That's an indicia of where I reside, like cars, like houses, and intent, I mean, she's expressing an intent here. Those things tend to me to kind of maybe supersede the, I think it was March 2020 document that you cited, that said we live in Arizona.
Sure.
There hasn't been anything since then. My feeling would be, there have been documents since then that say, my residence is Omaha, Nebraska.
Well, and, but contacts with other entities where she's still in Arizona.
But they are under no duty to cancel that previous 2020 document.
No.
They just have filed subsequent documents, subsequent in time, that says, my residence is different than it was in 2020. We're not deciding that 2020 thing, that's gone. But all the stuff that indicates Omaha seems to be there, in my opinion. I'm just trying to see, am I missing something here?
Well, just that you had a series of contacts with either us or the state where, you know, she seemed to be continuously living in Arizona.
I see.
So it made it a little hard to believe that she was meeting the residency requirements.
Sure. Do we have an idea of the assessed price of either of these properties?
I don't know about the one in Arizona. But the property here in Douglas County has an assessed value of $118,900. Let me see if the document from Arizona talks about purchase price, admittedly five years The sale price for that was $197.5, but that was five years ago.
Okay. It, you know, sounds to me like a lot of people, as people have expressed, have done the same thing, and we're not, you know, going down the, checking their vacation homes' primary residence status necessarily. I don't know, maybe we are, but it seems to me that, just on the face of this, yeah, they purchased a place for going to have the luxury to avoid Nebraska winters. I know a lot of people who do that, and that's something I wouldn't argue with, it sounds like a good idea. Anyhow, that seems to be where it goes here, and you say, if we think that, we should do that, and so I'm inclined to support this resolution.
Thank you, Commissioner. Quick question on my end, oh, then we'll go to Commissioner Fahy. You had mentioned the parameters around means and income and all that. Outside of the residency questions and gray areas, did she meet the means and income parameters?
I think what I perhaps didn't articulate as clearly as I should have, she's in one of the veterans categories where income and value don't really matter. If you're a member of that class, and you meet the residence requirements, then you're in.
Okay.
Well, it's like disabled service-connected, disabled vet kind of thing.
Okay. Got it. And for my own, I guess, clarification, has this property been exempted in prior years?
Yes.
Okay, got it, got it. Thank you, that's helpful. Ms. White, I'm probably going to go on a limb here, and, because I do see the facts that line up pretty well, that Mr. Goodwilly, the assessor, is lining up for us, and I do think they're valid, but I'm going to trust your intention here and also be compassionate towards what you've been going through personally, though we do expect you to have this as your primary residence in June moving forward, as you have stated here in the public meeting. So I'm going to go on a whim and trust your intent there on my end. Let me go now to Commissioner Fahy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I'll withdraw.
Thank you, Commissioner. Larry, do you have a question? Go for it.
Larry Storff, 5015 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, 68132. I'm against the rejection of this property tax exemption, I mean, homestead exemption, for the one reason, mainly, I'm a free citizen, and I can buy a property or live in a property for part of a year somewhere else, that should not disqualify me here in Omaha. I don't have to re-register to vote every year, why should I have to re-register for a homestead exemption? I've been paying since January of 1971. I should not have to do that every year, and it shouldn't be based on my retirement income. We have out-of-state landlords, absentee landlords, that are probably not paying property tax, or if they have a property that they're exempt on, and they have a residence that they live in it, they're exempt from homestead exemption too. That's not fair. And you can't tell us not to invest in a property in Arizona. You can't tell us to go down there and live for part of the year to take care of my mother and give up my home in Omaha. If I'm still registered, and I still pay taxes, and I'm here most of the time, and I claim it as my home, it's my home. Save us some money and stop this renewal every year bullshit. Pardon my language, but it is.
Language, Larry.
But it is BS. I shouldn't have to after all these years. Request it again. I've been paying and getting it every year. Why should I have to do that every year? I don't have to re-register. You need to stop the process. I think he's disingenuous with his answers also. He's skirting issues. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. Any other questions on this matter? If not, there's a motion to approve, oh, excuse me, Commissioner Fahy?
I'm fairly sure, though not 100%, so if I mistake the law, forgive me, but that residency is actual residing in an area with intent to there abide indefinitely. Assuming that's the case, though, per this application, does the statute require that she had been living in Nebraska for some previous look-back period or just going forward?
For each application year, for each year you're in homestead, you need to be in the home between January 1 and August 15.
And the operative dates we're talking about here are January 1 of 2024?
2025.
25 to August.
This is a 25 application.
Right, I misspoke, thank you. January 1st, 25 to August 15th. So we understand her to be returning imminently with an intent to then reside there. There does not seem to be a dispute, she has not resided there, January 1 to today, correct? So we understand her to be returning imminently with an intent to then reside there. There does not seem to be a dispute she has not resided there January 1 to today, correct?
I think that is the, the issue.
Physically.
I think physically she's been in Arizona from November through the present time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments on this matter? Ms. White, any final words on your end?
I, I have been back and forth from some funerals that I had attained. I lost a couple of siblings. And it was, the judge here thought it would be better if we just finished our divorce so I wouldn't have to spend so much money trying to get back and forth. So that was one of the reasons I sent the document to you from here so I could make sure I don't miss the timeframe that I've been doing for so many years. There's a timeframe you have to turn that document in, and I didn't want it appear late. So that's why I turned it in, because I didn't think that where it came from made a difference, as long as you saw that I was making the intent.
Thank you, Ms. White, and thank you for being on Zoom today. There's a motion on the table to grant the homestead exemption. It's been seconded, so we'll go ahead and vote.
Motion, motion passes, Commissioner Morgan abstaining, all other commissioners voting yes.
Thank you. We'll go into our resolutions, Resolutions E through F, which we can vote in block plus adjournment. Motion to approve by Rogers, second by Morgan. Was there anybody that wanted to speak to Resolutions E or F today on equalization? If not, we'll vote.
Motion passes seven to zero. And if I may, Mr. Chair, just for any of the homeowners involved in the protest, you will receive a notice in the mail from Douglas County that confirms today's actions. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. We will now go into our Board of Commissioners' agenda. Roll call, please. Oh, yes. Oh, she just left, but she'll get that letter. Yeah, no, thank you. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Borgeson. Commissioner Kavanaugh. Commissioner Fahy. Commissioner Friend. Commissioner Morgan.
Here.
Commissioner Rogers, Mr. Chair.
Here. First item of business is Section A and B, A being the approval of the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held Tuesday, May 13, 2025. B being the approval of claims submitted for payment process through Tuesday, May 27, 2025. We have a motion to second. Motion by Rogers, second by Morgan. Please vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you. Next, we have our consent agenda, uh, excuse me, consent agenda from, for items A through I. There was a motion, second for discussion. Motion by Rogers, second by Morgan. Any questions or comments on consent agenda? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
All right, that takes care of consent agenda. Mr. Levy, thank you for being here today and for your continued service on the planning commission. Thank you. We'll continue on our agenda here to Section 5, Recognitions and Proclamations. We have Item A, a recognition of a county employee retirement for Lynn Pickering, who has worked for Douglas County Environmental Services for 29 years. I don't think she's here today, but we want to honor her service and pass a resolution recognizing her retirement. Do we have a motion to second? Motion by Rogers, second by Morgan. We'll go ahead and vote.
Motion passes, Commissioner Kavanaugh is absent. Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you for the recognition in Item B. Do you want to take that one, Commissioner Borgeson? Yep. Yep.
I'll read the resolution, if I may.
Sounds good.
Whereas mental health is essential to everyone's overall health and well-being as all Americans face challenges in life that can impact their mental health. And whereas there are practical tools that all people can use to improve their mental health and increase resiliency. And whereas mental health conditions are real and prevalent throughout our nation. However, with effective treatment, individuals with mental health conditions can recover and lead whole productive lives. And whereas Douglas County has prioritized aiding those in community with mental illness through the services provided by our Community Male Health Center. And whereas Community Male Health Center provides many behavioral, excuse me, services, including inpatient outpatient care programs and social detoxification substance abuse services. And whereas the CMHC services collaborate closely with Douglas County Corrections, facilitating programs such as mental health diversion, emergency community support, chemical dependency evaluations, intensive care outpatient, and educational classes. Whereas each business, school, government agency, healthcare provider, organization, and citizen shares the burden of mental health challenges and is responsible for promoting mental health wellness and supporting prevention strategies and treatments efforts in our community and workplaces. Now therefore be it resolved by this Board of County Commissioners, Douglas County, Nebraska, that this board does hereby proclaim May to be Mental Health Awareness Month and encourages every resident to commit to increasing the awareness and understanding of mental health in our community, to learn the steps individuals can take to strengthen their mental health and to recognize the general need to support appropriate and accessible services for all people with mental health conditions. Dated this 20th day of May, 2025. Make motion to approve.
Motion by Borgeson, second by Rogers. And you got something? Are you good? Okay, we'll vote. Thank you. Oh, you do have something?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. Larry Stor, 501-5 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, 68132. I am largely for this resolution, but I'd like to make some comments due to something that's, I can't get anybody in this town, this county to talk about. But my previous commissioner, Marianne Borges, Marianne Boyle. And I had a discussion about the brain condition called absence of corpus callosum, which is that membrane. And she agreed with me that, yes, it is a form of mental illness. However, in this county, I have a grandson with that problem. He was denied the opportunity for an assessment during a court case because the judge would not hear the evidence that he does have this mental condition, this disability, which he is on disability, he is on Medicaid. The judge would not hear that, declared him normally, totally normal citizen and his own rights. The judge was misled on the facts by his caretakers, because he's in out-of-home care. The judge was misled, and so were the attorneys. But I went to the hearing and I attempted to get to the judge on the facts, but he would not hear it. I gave him a folder of evidence to prove it, he would not hear it. I cannot get anybody to talk about it because I guess, who knows? Nobody wants to admit anything. But that needs to be looked at again. He needs to have another hearing so that he gets the assessment that he is, would be able to get had he, had he actually gone to the microphone and said, I'm innocent, declared innocent, and got in that, gotten that hearing. He would have gotten an assessment, but he was denied that. I don't blame the judge because he was misled. I don't blame the county attorney and the defense attorneys because they were misled. They were misled by his caretakers. And maybe his therapist. There's something wrong with that mental illness program in Nebraska. Needs to be looked at. Yes, all people, it says all people, including those that are incarcerated or encouraged to plead no contest by somebody other than himself. I won't, I won't say the name and I won't name the judge, but that needs to be reopened. I've attempted to do that and nobody will talk about it one way or the other. That is wrong. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go ahead and vote on the proclamation.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you. Move forward here, we have a public hearing. Item 7A, a public hearing to consider a proposed golf car ordinance to allow golf cars to be driven within SID 585 Pier 15 in Douglas County. I will now open up the public hearing for this item. Was there any commentary questions on this item? If not, I will close the public hearing on this item. As a reminder, there typically would be three readings. We can suspend the rules to, suspend those three readings to vote on it today if desired by the board. Motion to suspend the rules, the three readings, by Rogers, second by Friend. And we'll vote on that first and then the actual ordinance.
All right, and we need to do a voice vote on these ordinances. Commissioner Borgeson. Commissioner Kavanaugh. Commissioner Fahy. Commissioner Friend. Commissioner Morgan. Commissioner Rogers. Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Motion to suspend the three readings passes seven to zero.
Very good, thank you. Now we can vote to approve the actual ordinance for the SID. And we do need to name it specifically. Very good. Does that meet the statute for that, Teresa? Okay, very good. Appreciate it. And is there a second for that? Second by Morgan. Any further discussion? Otherwise, let's vote.
Commissioner Borgeson. Commissioner Kavanaugh. Commissioner Fahy. Commissioner Friend. Commissioner Morgan. Commissioner Rogers. Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you. We'll continue on our agenda here into committees. We have under Finance Budget Report as presented. We also have three presentations today from three different departments coming in over target for their next fiscal year budget, '25, '26. I will go ahead and just take them as they're listed on the agenda here. These are presentations by Douglas County Court, District Court, and Clerk of the District Court. First on the agenda is the Douglas County Court. So if you want to prepare that presentation specifically.
Sorry, Mr. Chair, which one?
Douglas County Court.
Thank you. That one right there. Okay. So just push the arrows back and forth.
Down here.
Hang on, Pam, let me check something. Sorry. Want to make sure I'm sharing. Thanks. Okay, now it's yours. Thank you.
Hey, good morning. I'm Pam Cardenas, Judicial Administrator, and with me today is Judge Marcella Kine, Presiding County Court Judge. Thank you all, first of all, for allowing us to present our budget request this morning. You all should have a presentation in hand of the slides that I will present. The first slide is court services. Douglas County is the busiest county in the state with county court consisting of 83 employees and 12 judges. In the fiscal year '23, '24, the court's processed over 70,000 cases. Criminal traffic, 35,989. Probate, 2,287. Civil small claims, 27,684. And protection orders, 1,443. A quick overview of the services that we provide to Douglas County citizens. County court is broke ground into three divisions. Criminal traffic, they handle all misdemeanor cases, including traffic citations and municipal ordinance violations, preliminary hearings and felony cases, and protection order cases that they divide with the district court judges. Probate's the next division. We handle guardianship and conservatorship cases, estates, adoptions, and process the inheritance tax. Civil small claims, do handle cases, civil cases up to $57,000. Those types of cases, contract disputes, landlord-tenant disputes, auto or personal accidents, and small claims cases for damages sought or money claimed not exceeding $6,000. The next slide is a breakdown of our budget request. We are requesting $1,146,500. The budget target was 896,981. So it's an increase of $249,519. There are two causes for this request. First would be for the court-appointed attorney fees. We're looking to increase the hourly rate. Currently, our criminal cases, $65 an hour, looking to increase to $80 an hour. Probate cases is 85, an increase to $100 an hour. This increase would affect the budget roughly $198,138. The second cause would be relocation of our civil division. We're currently located in the Civic Center on the Farnham level. We were fortunate enough to get possession of the old Register of Deeds office on the Harney level. So with that transition, we will incur some costs. We have new shelving, and then we need to do a removal of the electric server in the old area, so it'll be roughly around $33,000. Window coverings, $10,000. We will also, with this new space, be able to provide a mediation room for attorneys and litigants to discuss their civil cases. And then there'll be miscellaneous expenditures such as wheelie chairs, training room for the employees, and other expenditures to make it a smooth transition. That increase would be roughly around $60,000. Next budget, uh, next slide, I wanted to give a little background information on the court-appointed attorney fees. Per statute, 29-3902, we are required to appoint counsel to indigent defendants, whereas criminal cases where there's a conflict in the case and the public defender is representing one of the defendants, and also in probate matters regarding its liadum appointments. The last time that the fees were addressed was in September of 2022. The hourly rate increased from $50 to $65 for criminal cases and $50 to $85 for probate. So it's important that we keep pace with the other counties in Nebraska. Want to point out our criminal cases. In all 93 counties, Douglas County has the lowest hourly rate at this time. Probate cases, they're one county lower, and that's Banner County in Harrisburg, Nebraska, which pays 70 an hour. Next slide, I provided rates paid in Nebraska County Court. This was data that was put out by the Nebraska State Bar Association in a report dated May 7, 2025. So you see the hourly rate, $65 one county, that's us. $70 is the county I mentioned, Banner County. 95 an hour rate, there's eight counties. $100, 13 counties, 110, eight counties. 115, nine counties, 125, 53 counties. So as you can see, we're well below everyone else. I do want to mention Douglas County District Court pays $125 an hour, as well as Sarpy and Lancaster County. Next slide, I want to give a yearly comparison. Even, not even increasing the hourly rate, the court-appointed attorney fees continues to go up. It's not necessarily an increase of cases. It looks like a lot of the money is allocated more toward probate cases than criminal cases. We're looking at a 60-40 percentage. As the fiscal year 2223, there was $314,922 paid out. Fiscal year 2324, $448,822. And then fiscal year 2425, we paid out $523,465 so far. That was as of April 30, 2025. So I do want to mention, we did receive a supplement in March of 2025, $457,000 to help get us through this last budget year. Next slide, the last slide, I wanted to mention the cost-saving measures. We understand how important it is to work within the budget constraint, so I wanted to mention a couple of items where we were able to save funds, toner ink cartridges. We switched to all refurbished cartridges on all printers except the big copier printers. That was important. We were reviewing our dot-com chargebacks and noticed one of our cartridges was $765 for one cartridge. And so after we looked into it, we were able to get refurbished for a little over $100. And that was a huge saving because we had nine printers that used that ink cartridge. Secondly, we actively searched for the best price on office supplies, office furnitures, and services before ordering anything. We review operating procedures and processes on a regular basis to ensure efficiency. Wanted to point out, we were required to provide an extra copy of all court hearings. And so we ordered a lot of DVDs and Blu-rays. And now we have a state, we could no longer have to order those. We have a savings of $3,600 a year on our office supplies to allocate somewhere else. Last, we've used benches from the Hall of Justice, sixth floor District Courtroom, that had them installed in a county courtroom, which was an asset to us to reuse those benches. And I don't like to throw anything away, so it made a huge 100% appearance change in the courtroom at no cost to us. So we will continue to be mindful of the budget and utilize the funds at the best of our ability and that are within our control. So that's all I have. I believe Judge Keim has a few words, and then we can answer any questions that you have.
Good morning. My name is Marcella Keim. I'm the Presiding Judge in County Court. And I just wanted to, first of all, thank Pam for putting together the presentation and working so diligently to make sure that we are able to provide the services to the constituents and the citizens here in Douglas County at the rate that we're able to and the level of service that our citizens are accustomed to and deserve. So as you can see, the budget request primarily consists of court-appointed fees, and that's why I'm here, just to kind of add a little context to that. We are required, as you know, to provide court-appointed services to individuals who are not only charged with crimes, but are some of the most vulnerable adults that we have here in in our county. So not only are they guardian at liudem fees, but in certain circumstances, an individual who wants to contest a guardianship and conservatorship, a potential ward, is entitled to court-appointed counsel. And if they are indigent, we find them to be indigent, then the county has to pay. All of those probate court appointment fees are actually either approved by a member of the Douglas County Attorney's Office in advance of us paying them, or if they are not approved, we set them for hearing. So we're very transparent as far as the fee applications go. They're on justice, they're part of the public website, anybody can access them. And they are either approved as deformed and content by the Douglas County Attorney's Office, or in the alternative, we set them for hearing if anybody wants to come and object, anybody at all for that. There is also a provision in the statute where criminal court appointment fees can also go to the county attorney's office for approval. But as you can see, we pay the lowest in the entire state out of 92, 93 counties. And quite frankly, that is a little embarrassing, to be honest with you. This is a statewide report that was put out in May of 2025. And as the chief judge for the largest county in the entire state, I had to report that to the state of Nebraska and own it, and I did. And so, you know, we pay $65 an hour. We have lawyers, obviously, here today. And we all know what the going rate is for qualified counsel, and it's not $65 an hour. And we are very lucky that we have a large number of attorneys here in the Omaha area who are essentially willing to volunteer their time to provide really qualified and needed service here in Douglas County. And I just want to make sure that we can continue to attract good lawyers to the court appointment list that is put together and administered by the Douglas County District Court. There are, the GALs who are appointed have to go through a 10-hour training class through the state of Nebraska to be qualified GALs in probate cases. We do not pay for them to be trained. They pay on their own to get those additional CLEs to even be put on the list to be paid $85 an hour for a GAL appointment. We have probably 10 lawyers in Douglas County who are certified, maybe 12, who are GAL appointees in Douglas County. So we could definitely use maybe a couple extra dollars to bolster interest in that. And so I'm happy to answer any questions that I might have, that you may have. We are very thankful that we are able to give this presentation today. And I'm happy to provide any context or any answers or to any questions that anybody may have.
All right. Thank you both for the presentation. We'll go ahead and jump into some discussion here. As a reminder, for all three of these departments, this is just a discussion on the requests. We're not actually voting on budgets today. But with that, let me go to Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Judge, thank you for taking the time and Pam, thanks for supplying this information. It's very helpful in our deliberations. It kind of strikes me that Douglas County's last in all of the counties in Nebraska in terms of our compensation for lawyers representing people in county court. And so I think it's, you know, very appropriate that we address that and maybe even look forward to joining the majority, I think it's 53 counties, who have somewhat more of a compensation package than Douglas County, the richest county in the state with the most people. So maybe that's something that we can talk about going forward. But it appears to me, and correct me if I'm wrong, that the bulk of this request is exactly for that. You have some modest office supply requests. I got to commend you on reusing the benches from six in your courtrooms below. I am an old courthouse lawyer, and I love the old courthouse furniture and stuff. You couldn't get anything as good as what was made originally, so I commend you on doing that. You actually upgraded the quality of furniture in the courtrooms by doing that. But that, that's an indication to me that you're really doing a heads-up administration with a very tight belt. But all of those, the shelving removal, electric trever, window coverings, mediation room, miscellaneous expenses, only account for $60,000. The overwhelming bulk is we're talking about this important concept that people, regardless of their income, deserve to be represented in court. And that's one of the highest and best things that we do, to provide a fair and just justice system. And so I'm totally on board with that. I'm just concerned, as Judge Keim pointed out, that we have a difficult time getting the best and the brightest to represent clients in county court if we don't compensate them adequately. Nobody certainly is going to be getting rich on the enhanced compensation that you talk about. But nobody's going to get rich if we join the majority of other Nebraska counties and pay them $125 an hour. I really don't know any lawyers who charge $125 an hour anymore. But that's something that I think will bear some looking at, maybe going forward. You do a great job with a lot of cases. And, you know, I don't see the case to FTE and the county court administration, but it's got to be a big, big number. And, you know, that includes everybody from judges to the clerks at the desk. You give people a lot of service for not a great amount of money. And so I commend you on your efficiency and the key role that you play in providing justice to the folks who come before county court in Douglas County. Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate that. We, you know, obviously, we're trying to maybe ease in the increase. We didn't want to shock anybody too bad, because if we literally went from 65 to 125, that would be a huge ask. And, you know, as you pointedly pointed out, you know, $200,000 for court appointment fees is essentially what we're asking for. And that's at the increase rate that we're kind of building into our next year's budget. And so the issue is, is we have a large number of people today that we appoint attorneys for. So when you think of, oh, well, it's only 15 extra dollars, it's only 20 extra dollars per hour, per tens of thousands of cases, it does add up. And so we're trying to be mindful and kind of build that in, kind of in a progression state, instead of just dropping. Yeah, that's the goal. So thank you, and thank you for the kind words.
Thank you both. We'll go to Commissioner Morgan.
I think Commissioner Kavanaugh made some good points about the pay and the challenge that you face. It is, and I want to be sure that our Finance Director, Lori Persch, can make any comments she'd like to make. I know our, this is about 27% over the target number, which, you know, we know that we're going to face some real challenges. But I hear what you're saying, and we're going to carefully look at what we can do and want you to know that we'll be looking at this and appreciate the service that you provide.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go to Commissioner Friend.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Judge and Pam, thank you for the information. The numbers that you, that you show us in regard to the court-appointed attorney rates are, we knew it, but it's staggering when you compare it to the other 93 counties. But here's the thing, I'm assuming, and I wanted you to weigh in on this if you could, and it might not be a great question, but I think it is. It's not just for posterity. There's a practical reason that numbers like this should be raised. What I was going to ask you is, based on your experience or your institutional knowledge, what type of adverse impact does it have? What could or would occur if a court-appointed attorney fee is not keeping pace? So in other words, does it create a backlog that we just, it takes forever to get out of? I mean, not only are you looking for attorneys that are willing to do it, but it pushes our workload back tremendously. Am I, am I correct with that assumption? I mean, so in other words, Arthur County doesn't have that problem. They don't have the workload that we have, but their attorneys are being paid more. So they get through these quicker because it takes less time to find them.
Well, I think-
Is that fair?
Well, I don't necessarily know if it would create a backlog. My main concern, and we have seen this happen, is a decrease in the number of individuals who ask to be on the court-appointed list. So that's my concern, and we have seen that especially in probate cases, which are very sensitive cases, which are specialized types of cases. And you need individuals who have that sort of expertise. And when there are literally 12, maybe, I mean, it's on the Supreme Court website. When you have 12 people who are willing to serve a guardian at liudem in potentially 3,000 cases per year? I mean, I think that kind of says it all. And, you know, we have a lot of people who agreed, we have different court appointment lists. So we have court appointment list for misdemeanors and court appointment list for felonies. And so, you know, some of the newer attorneys will be on the misdemeanor list to kind of cut their teeth. And, but yet you have some experienced attorneys who have been practicing for 30 years who agree to be on the misdemeanor list, almost in a pro bono type of a situation, to be honest with you, because they feel it's their obligation to give back. And so my concern, and again, we've seen it, is people, we, there's no mechanism for us to force people to take court appointments. They have to volunteer to do it. And so you have to be able to reach people in some way. And sometimes philanthropically, only goes so far. And there are a lot of requirements for attorneys. You know, you have to have special CLEs to be on the court appointment criminal list. You have to have special CLEs to be on the guardian and probate, and juvenile, too. And so, and we don't pay for people to get those CLEs, which are hundreds of dollars an hour. We don't pay for them to get those. They do it out of their own pocket. And then we ask them to serve in that capacity. So that's my concern. There will be people who need court-appointed counsel in criminal cases. There will be people who need guardian at liudems and who need counsel in probate cases. They are vulnerable adults. Those people will exist, and if our numbers tell us anything, they will increase 10 to 15% a year. And we need to be able to have people to slide into those spots. Those people, you know, people will need our help, and we need to be able to give them court-appointed counsel. That's my concern.
Effective counsel.
Yes.
Okay. Judge, thank you for the, thank you for the input. Appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Good morning. Okay. Anybody else on this matter, on this presentation, rather? If not, thank you for coming in today.
Thank you very much.
We'll switch gears to District Court.
Hey, Sherri.
Second. Thank you, sir.
Which, um, let's see here. What happened to mine? Okay, that's good. Documents, is it in there? Let me get out of this. Thanks. Yeah. Ah, that's me. This one? Yep. Okay. So, let me share first. Me, too. Yep. Yep, I think so. Okay, thanks. Yeah, thanks. Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Sherri Larson. I'm the District Court Administrator for the Fourth Judicial District of Nebraska. Thank you for letting me be here this morning to talk about our budget. I'll just start by giving just a little bit of background about the court. We're a trial court of general jurisdiction for the state. There are 18 judges in the Fourth Judicial District. The majority of the case types that we handle are domestic relations, paternity, all felony, criminal equity, and civil cases involving more than $57,000. We also function as an appellate court in deciding appeals for certain county court case types and various administrative agencies. The District Court- The District Court, as you are aware, the judges are state employees, but the county has, there are several people that are county employees. So this is a list of county employees that the District Court has, which is 49.75. We have 18 District Court bailiffs, six people that work in administration, which is my office, and we help the judges with various things. Conciliation Court has four people. That is where people take parenting and mediation classes that are ordered by the court. We have seven law clerks. Five of those, excuse me, three of those clerks are full-time. And then we have four clerks that are term clerks that serve two-year terms with the court. Those overlap, so we have two clerks that are starting their second year, and then two clerks that will start their first two-year term this fall. The Referees Office does parent the divorce and paternity cases for the court. There are two referees in that office and one administrative assistant. And then we have our Drug Court, which has nine and a quarter, three-quarters people. That is a problem-solving court that is funded directly by Douglas County, not by the state. And then we will have two new staff members for the Board of Mental Health, if you would approve that in our budget. Our final budget for 2025 was $6.3 million. The target that you gave us was $6.7 million, and we are requesting $7.38 million, which is $621,803,000, $300,000 over target. That's 9.9%. I didn't, couldn't figure out how to get that on my slide. So 9.1% over target. That target that you gave us, I just want to note, did include monies for the Board of Mental Health, which I will talk about in my presentation in a little bit, but that was provided as part of our target. So I just wanted you to know, that's not, that's not part of why we're over. The largest reason for our overage in our request is because of the two new courtrooms that are being built by the Building Commission. Those will go on the sixth floor of the Hall of Justice. We are required to provide the audio and visual for that. We use a state vendor because the state had updated all the courtrooms in the last three years, but they will not fund the new courtrooms. So we have to do that, and that is $315,000. That includes the AV for the courtrooms and the jury assembly space. We are also required to pay for all the furniture and fixtures for those two courtrooms, which is $147,000 approximately. Just so you know, the benches, if we can reuse benches, we will as well. The benches that were on the sixth floor were from juvenile courtrooms, not district courtrooms. And the two district courtrooms that we are using on sixth floor now will remain in use, whether they're used by county court or another office, but they are usable courtrooms once we move out of them. The two new courtrooms that are going on sixth floor will both include jury boxes. Currently, we have two District Court judges that do not have jury-ready courtrooms. So if they have a jury, they have to go to find another courtroom from another judge. And a lot of times, that is very, very difficult because if a judge isn't on the panel to have a jury, they have other hearings going on at that time. So gallery capacity for those courtrooms is 52 people and 73 people collectively. County Court talked about increase in attorney fees. We increased our attorney fees a couple of years ago, I think July 1st of 2023. At that time, we raised our rate to $125, which is in line with the majority of the state. While that has, we've seen an increase in our budget on those fees. A lot of the other reason we've seen those increases is due to more court-appointed attorneys. We are seeing the public defender having to conflict out due to multi-defendant cases, so there are a lot more cases that they cannot take on. Excuse me. For notes, in 2023-24 budget year, we had 605 court-appointed felonies. Within those felonies, 10 of those were court-appointed homicide cases. In the current budget year, we had 544 court-appointed felony cases, and out of that, 13 of those were homicides. A homicide case can cost up to $50,000 when, once it's completed, which I was going to let you know, we have 39 attorneys on our felony appointment list and 15 attorneys on our homicide court-appointed list. In addition to more court-appointed attorneys, we have more court costs for appeals because those court-appointed attorneys, if that case is appealed to the Supreme Court, we have to pay for those costs as well. This year, we're almost 200% over budget on that line item. We have seen a lot of appeals. For the next fiscal year, we increased our budget for that line by $80,000. Within that is also the expert witness fees. I forgot, I talked to Tom Riley yesterday just to make sure I was reflecting correctly what's happening in his office as well, and he had brought that up. And we do see those coming through as well. And those are getting harder to find, and they are very expensive. Our next slide is the Douglas County Drug Court. About a year ago, we increased the cap of people that we allow in Drug Court. We had been at 150 cap, but we increased that to 200. In doing that, we have seen an increase in our drug testing labs, which is about a $10,000 increase. But we also hired an additional drug treatment coordinator because that person touches or meets with almost every client, new client that comes into court. So we only had one coordinator, and she was extremely overwhelmed. So we were lucky enough to find a second person to do that, and that was an increase of $70,000. The cost for a person to be in Drug Court on a, per day, is $14.42, whereas the cost for someone to be at Corrections is $180 a day. So I feel like this is, this is a really good increase in our budget. It's one of the best programs that we have within the District Court. We've had 2,200 graduates in the program since it began in 1997. And then just the last piece, which has put a big increase in our budget overall, is the Board of Mental Health. We will be taking on the, a lot of the Board of Mental Health duties that had historically been performed by the clerk of the District Court. July 1st, we plan to take over the administrative support to the Board of Mental Health, such as scheduling meetings, updating with providers for treatment plans, transport orders with the sheriff's office. We would also be taking over paying the Board of Mental Health members for their pay to be at meetings and mileage, which is required by statute. And then we would take over those court reporting costs as well. And our total budget request for that was $319,606, which was a little bit under the target number that we were given for that line. And that concludes my presentation. If you have any questions, I am happy to answer them.
Thank you so much. We're going to go into discussion here, starting with Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Thank you for this. I'm, on the Building Commission, which is overseeing the courtroom expansion up there, and the bulk of that expense is carried by them. What we're talking about here are the interior finishing furniture and things like that. Is that correct?
Correct.
Right. If I could just go through, so I have it clear in my mind, the, I think, target budget that you were given was $6.7 million for the year. And with these additionals, that totals 7.3 million, is that right?
Yes.
So it's about a, what, a $600,000 increase?
Correct.
Is that right?
Yes.
So if I'm reading this information correctly, you outline here that the new sixth-floor courtroom has audiovisual technology for $315,000, furniture and fixtures for $147,000.
Correct.
That the attorney fee increase would, and you can only estimate on this, be about $80,000, is that right?
That's just for the court costs. We received a supplement in, was it March? It was $550,000, and that was included in our target. So we have a line item for court-appointed attorney fees at 1.5 million. And then the court costs on top of that are $225,000. We had budgeted $127,000 this year, so we're increasing that line by that $80,000.
And that's because of increased filings?
Increased filings for appeals, yes, and increases in witness fees.
We have no control over that.
We don't.
Right. And then there is the Douglas County Drug Court with some increased capacity, which results in increased drug testing.
Correct.
That's $10,000. And then additional drug treatment coordinator, $70,000 for that.
Yep.
That's the bulk of the request?
That is the $622,000.
Then the Board of Mental Health administrative support to the Board of Mental Health is separate from this? Could you explain to me how that works, then?
It's, um, it's part of our target, the 6.76.
Okay.
But because it is new to our budget, I didn't want to let the board know why our target was higher than most of the other departments were given.
And the Board of Mental Health has been going on for some time. That's just kind of an administrative shift of duties.
Correct.
To the court.
Yes. The clerk would still do the filings.
Right.
For them.
Right. So based on this, the $621,803 is the request?
Correct.
Okay. I got to say, for all that you do, and you carry the bulk of the heavy lifting, particularly in terms of criminal court, you know, all of the murder trials and all of the heavy felonies, you do a great job and a necessary job to keep our community safe and just. You also handle, you know, all of the big-ticket money cases everywhere from, you know, divorce to contracts to, you name it, and you're busy all the time. The state has recognized this by increasing the number of judges from Douglas County, and I think this is reflective of that. So thank you for this.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go to Commissioner Friend.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So Sherri, could you say, I think you just spoke to this when you were speaking, when you were talking to Commissioner Kavanaugh. The addition, the budget request and the addition of the Board of Mental Health.
Yes.
The administrative support and all the other stuff, is that factored, you said that's already factored into your target?
The Board of Mental Health is factored into the target. That $300,000 is part of the 6.7.
Okay, so what we should be looking at, and I can get more clarity on this later, that, that is not included in the 16.85% overage. Most of that is...
9.1% overage.
Thank you. Yeah, we don't want to...
I don't want to be the highest.
No, sorry. Okay, no, that, that helps.
Yeah.
Thanks for the clarity.
And I didn't mean to confuse it. I just did want to be clear.
No, I appreciate that. Thank you, Sherri.
You're welcome.
Other comments or questions? Commissioner Borgerson?
Thank you. Thank you, Sherri.
You're welcome.
Do you know how much the, besides the $462,000 that Douglas County is spending on the two new courtrooms, how much the Building Commission has paid out for those courtrooms?
I don't know what they paid out at this time, but I think the overall budget for the courtrooms and the jury assembly space is $5 million.
Not for those two, but total? Or for those two?
For those two and the jury assembly space. That will go on HARNY level.
And now you know why we fight not to add more judges. Question on the attorney, on the, so we also pay in an exuberant amount to the state's public advocacy office. So when there is a conflict, why, why are we not using that office to do those conflicted cases? Because we're already paying. Do you know why?
I can get more information for you. I know I have one judge that does use them.
Could you find out how often and how much?
Yes, I will look into that and get back to you.
I know at one time, we tried to get that money so that, back to Douglas County because, again, we weren't using it. But now because of this increase, I'm just curious as to why we wouldn't use it more because we're already paying. So in essence, we're actually paying twice.
Yep.
We're paying to subsidize the entire state's office that isn't utilized by us much. And then we're also paying attorneys to come in and do these conflicted cases. And so, anyway, if you could find that out.
I will. I will talk to my presiding judge. He is out of town this week, so he could not be here. But I will talk to him when he gets back, and I'll let you know.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
And then on the Drug Court, did we not lose some federal funding for the, I know we pay for the Drug Court. We, it was a grant that was given to us way back when it started. And there's...
That was the SAMSA, was it?
Yeah.
Well, we had a SAMSA grant that we had received a long time ago. It was over a million dollars. That was long before I came on board.
Right.
But right now, we have a Bureau of Justice grant that we are using to pay for a deputy to attend the Drug Court and help with home visits. That's the most recent grant. And then we also get $400,000 from the state. That contract will be coming up for renewal here soon.
And that's what I'm nervous about in terms of all this cutting that's going on.
Yeah, we haven't heard of anything of being cut yet. We haven't heard of any cuts yet at this time. We have asked for an extension on the BJA grant because our funding ends in September, but we've asked for an extension. We've not heard on that. So I'm nervous about that.
And that amount was...
I think for the deputy, it's $50,000. It would cover almost the full year for her salary, about three-quarters of the year.
How much?
About three-quarters of the year.
Okay. All right. All right, thanks.
You're welcome.
Any other...
One other. We also have a SAMSA grant for the Drug Court.
Right.
And that is for two more years, but it's only like $150,000 total.
Right.
But hopefully, that will continue as well.
Yeah, that's what I'm, I don't think they're done yet. That's what...
No, I don't think they are. You're right.
Other comments or questions on the presentation? Otherwise, we'll transition to our final presentation from the clerk of the District Court.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Crystal Rhodes, if you're, if you're here, were you planning on, we have your presentation. Did you want us to...
Yes, please.
Run, run through it for, okay, all right, we'll get it up on the, on the screen.
Thank you.
Yep.
I can, thank you.
Okay, great.
Just let me know when you're ready to begin.
All right, we're good to go? Yep, go ahead. Thank you.
Okay. Good morning. I apologize to everyone for not being able to be there in person. I was scheduled to return home last night, and unfortunately, there were tornadoes all over the Midwest, and I was, my flight was canceled. So I am sorry that I couldn't be there in person to, to share this information with you. The slide that you're looking at there just kind of gives you an overview of the primary functions that my office performs, including the storing, tracking, and recording of all of... of the district court proceedings. We also receive deposit and account for all the fees and money paid into the district court and process the orders for judgments to be held by the court. And then my office, I also service the jury commissioner for the district and county court. We also have several clerks that provide services to the juvenile court. Next slide, please. Here's just a look at our total headcount on our budget data. We have had to add a few positions to our, to our office. I see this is actually an old version of this, too. That revenue number is incorrect, but I will make sure that you get the corrected slide. We're looking at about 1.7 million in revenue. I apologize about that typo there. Next slide, please. Here are the percentage of increase of our payroll over time. What we are seeing in our office is that as more judges have been added, as more prosecutors have been added, as more public defenders have been added, there has not been an increase in staff in the clerk's office. What that has meant is that a priority was given to time-sensitive things, as many of our court filings are. And then a lot of the other kind of miscellaneous record-keeping duties were sort of put on a back burner, which meant unfortunately that those items just were not getting completed. We had over 30,000 image errors that staff did not have a time to process. That means that while we had the documents and the images, they hadn't been correctly inputted into the state mandated system justice. There was not good, robust tracking of our evidence room. When court reporters would retire or leave and those exhibits were handed over to us, they were stored down in the basement in boxes, and there wasn't anyone that was really assigned to making sure that they were regularly being reviewed for retention schedule, which obviously creates additional space crises within our courthouse. So those are all things that were just frankly not being done at all in our office that we have had to begin doing. If I could have you move on to that next slide. We have done a lot in our office to try to streamline positions, as well as to make sure that we have done a good job with cross-training employees. But the fact of the matter is, is that we are still using Justice as our soft computing software, and calling it software is actually quite generous. It is actually an AS400 green screen mainframe, and it is extremely labor-intensive to add documents into it. Roughly 40% of the district court's documents are still coming into our office as paper. And because of the Supreme Court rules, the district court rules, and the state statute, my office is required to digitize those documents and get them uploaded, which we have been doing. But it has necessitated us adding additional staff just due to the volume that we have seen. I talked a little bit with you about the exhibit room. We had a single staff member trying to manage that. That was not working and was really leading to some clients, and frankly, some safety issues. And so we had to hire some additional staff to help manage that. Next slide, please. We have done an ongoing review of job titles and realigned the duties in our office so that more employees are cross-trained to try and make sure that we are able to provide the services that are necessary when they're necessary, but also to allow our employees to stay busy. We don't ever know on a day-to-day basis how many people are going to come in to file a protection order, or how many people are going to come in to request their bond checks, or any number of the services that we provide. And so what we have been trying to really do is make sure that we have adequate staff to cover all of those things, but that they're reasonably cross-trained so that we can reduce the number of overall staff that we have. Okay, next slide, please. This is talking a little bit about our mission, vision, and values. That's great information for you to have, but I don't think that, I need to read that to you. If you could give me the next slide, please. These are the three areas where we really worked on improving and saving some money. Next slide, please. One of the things that we have really done is go through each department and look for places where we can save money. We have had a massive reduction in our paper costs. We've done things like looking at, our office was creating a paper folder for every judge on every case. We stopped doing that. Like I said, about 40% of the judges are still using those paper files. We are creating those paper files for those judges, and the others are being left in the electronic format rather than duplicating that. That's saving us about 40,000 dollars a year just on the file folders alone. That doesn't include the printing cost, the toner cost, and the staff time, or the 80,000 dollar, you know, lecturers to store all of those records. So we have had a significant cost savings in that regard. We also stopped producing microfilm. There was a change to the record retention. We are no longer required to produce that microfilm, so we were able to stop that as well at a savings of over 25,000 dollars a year. We also looked at, we reduced the number of desktop scanners. We streamlined that process and have been looking for ways to otherwise improve our efficiency and reduce our overall costs. We've also had to make a substantial investment in staff development and making sure that they had the appropriate training, both completing their judicial branch education hours, but also just in things like accounting and general accounting principles, and making sure that our staff has had, has been properly trained on those, on those different practices, as well as working with them to try to identify any places where there could be additional cost savings. We've also been working on having financial reports that are standardized. It is shockingly difficult to track through the county's various systems, our reporting on our budget and our spending. And so my staff is spending a great deal of time working with other partners within the county to make sure that those reports are available to us. Next slide, please. We've done a number of things to make sure that we are holding ourselves accountable and that we are basing our staffing on the data that is available within our department. So along those lines, we did create database performance metrics. So we're looking at exactly what types of things our staff are processing, how long that takes, and the appropriate number of staff to meet that demand, as well as our statutory guidelines. We are required to process these documents in a timely fashion, and we'd like to have that done within, within one business day of it being filed. That can sometimes be a challenge just due to outages that are unfortunately very common and regular within the state software system. But we have been working to make sure that we are appropriately staffed so that when those types of unforeseen issues occur, it doesn't cause bottlenecks within the, within our processing. We are also looking at other ways to transition away from those paper-driven processes, and we have been advocating with the state to revamp the way that's done. The reason that so much of it remains a largely paper-based system is largely because the system is so completely un-user-friendly. A lot of people are unable to use it or access it, and it's frankly very unreliable. And so there is, there are a lot of barriers to its full implementation, and we continue to try to work with them to improve that. Okay, next slide, please. We are also working to make sure that we are being as efficient as possible. And so we've moved a lot of our tracking online so that we can actually have strong data about what's coming in and what's going out, and the timelines it takes for processing that information. This will help us to better staff the department appropriately, rather than just kind of, you know, trying to guess about where the actual needs are. Next. In terms of cost savings, there are a number of things that we have done to try to reduce costs, and I've talked through some of those with you. We reduced printing, we stopped printing files that weren't being requested. We have eliminated duplicative hardware and software, making sure that that, that we're being as cost-efficient as possible there. We also have reduced a number of expenses just related to office supplies, as well as working to transition to a new bank. That will lead to an additional revenue for the county, we estimate, of at least 16,000 dollars monthly, so about 191,000 dollars annually, to try to help offset the, what we have needed to have unfortunately added to the budget and our staff. Next slide, please. Again, talking about the revenue growth here, we're also going to work with the county to evaluate the 4D funding. We believe that there may be ways to further maximize the amount of reimbursement that the county receives. And then we're also looking to expand passport processing, which we believe will be another good source of revenue for the county, as well as looking to use online and e-notary services to make things more convenient for the, for the customers and to hopefully make it more efficient in our office as well. Okay, and next slide. We're also looking at, you know, another place for potential revenue would be to increase the court fees. Frankly, we have some very low uncollected court costs that have not been consistently pursued, that would be additional sources of revenue for the county. We are going to be working with the county attorney's office to try to reclaim that additional funding, as well as try to make recommendations on other cost savings areas that would be applicable to the court. But also, there needs to be a full review of court costs and filing fees because I believe that they are not representative of the true cost to provide these services, and that would be something that could substantially reduce the overall cost to the county if we were able to get appropriate adjustments to that. Next slide. The main thing that we are up against here frankly is just an increase in the volume. My staff last year processed over 300,000 filings for the district court. They processed nearly 4,000 protection orders. They had over 500 active Board of Mental Health pieces that they were managing. And so they're, they're really doing a remarkable job, given the work volume, but unfortunately, with the software that we currently have and the mandates that we have related to how quickly the documents are processed in order to ensure due process, we have to add staff. And unfortunately, that is an additional cost to the county. But I'm happy to take any questions the commissioners might have related to that.
Thank you very much. We'll go ahead and go into questions, starting with Commissioner Friend.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. And...
I'm sorry, I'm having difficulty hearing you.
One second. Go ahead.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. Rhodes, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Hey, thanks for the, thanks for the presentation. Really appreciate it. Is there, and sorry for your travails. I don't know where you're hanging out right now, but thank you for joining us. So... Is, I don't know if it's factored in, maybe I'm missing something. The, the district court had given us information earlier about, about their budget request relating to the Board of Mental Health, the administrative support they're going to have to do, the members' pay in mileage, the court reporting costs for the BMH meetings. We're talking to the tune of maybe 320,000 dollars. I guess I would ask you, and again, maybe I'm missing something. The Board of Mental Health reduction is factored into your target, I'm assuming. If we're, are we increasing staff, if we're going to increase staffing needs, are those, is the reduction in that staff needed for Board of Mental Health factored in here?
I'm, we're not going to be reducing our staff. So right now, we have two clerks that are in the Board of Mental Health, and they continue to receive all of the filings and process all of those filings. We can't really reduce it to less than two because you always have to have someone there to cover if there is illness or vacation or whatever. And so we would continue to need to have that. What would be happening, though, is that there would be a transfer of the cost for the Board of Mental Health members from my budget to the court admin budget, which frankly is probably prudent for the board because it is actually the district court bench that sets the, that sets the compensation amount. And so it makes a lot more sense for them to have that be tied to their budget than it does to have it be tied to mine. And so that is what they are seeking. I, I don't believe that, that our budget reflected 312,000 dollars for just the payment of those board members and mileage, but I, I don't know exactly. I, I haven't reviewed the court admin's budget, so I wouldn't be comfortable speaking to what they did or didn't do.
Okay, fair enough. Is there, we've been, we've been on Justice, and you're right, I've seen it. It's a green screen. We've been on Justice for quite a while. I think the transition occurred maybe back in the mid 2000s, 2005 or something of that nature. Did you say that there, I mean, it's labor-intensive. What type of issues was that causing? I mean, obviously, you're transferring paper to a green screen and downloading all that information. Did that require extra FTOs as well?
Yes. So my staff, when the documents come in, they accept them, they, but then they have to scan it, then it has to be attached to the return, you know, to the register of actions. And it is not, it's not simple. It's not like, you know, you click the little paper clip on your email and you just attach it. It is multiple screens where they're coding in the information to get it to process. It, it is, it's, it's really kind of unbelievable that we're still using it. I, I'm surprised, I, I am not surprised by, by the frequency with which it breaks just because it is a very antiquated software.
Okay, I think my time is up. And again, thank you for joining. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments at this time? If not, thank you very much for the presentation, and we'll be in touch as far as the budget process.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that concludes our presentations under Budget Committee, or Finance Committee, rather. Under Child Use Services, we have no actual business, just a quick reminder that there's a committee meeting this Thursday at 9:30 a.m. over at the Justice Center Conference Room on the first floor. Beyond that, under Human Resources, we have a weekly personnel report from civil service as presented. We do have a need for executive session for the purposes of legal advice and litigation. Do I have a motion of seconds? Go to the exec session?
No motion.
Motion by Morgan. Second by Fahy. Please vote.
Motion passes 6-0. Commissioner Rogers is absent at the moment.
Thank you. The board will now go into executive session for the purposes of legal advice and litigation. Thank you. The board will now go into executive session for the purposes of legal advice and litigation.
Motion to reconvene and adjourn by Commissioner Borgeson, second by Commissioner Morgan. Motion passes six to zero. Commissioner Rogers is absent. We are adjourned at 11:33 a.m.